Call for meeting to order. Let's start with the Pledge of Legions.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which sustains one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. We have a few announcements. The town of Grafton is updating its housing production plan, which will continue to offer the town greater local control.
Yes, sir. Are you new at this?
What's that?
Nothing.
No. The mic's new.
Oh, okay.
The town of Grafton is updating its housing production plan, which will continue to offer the town greater local control over affordable housing development and provide an updated blueprint to help further the town's progress towards meeting the state's 10% affordable housing goal. Not only is this plan a state requirement for Chapter 40B compliance, it focuses on local needs and priorities through a proactive housing strategy of town-sponsored initiatives. The Grafton Affordable Housing Trust is holding a community housing forum tomorrow at 7:00 PM at the Great Hall of Apple Tree Arts at One Grafton Common to get perspectives on the town's future housing agenda. For more information or to submit a comment about the plan, please contact Fiona Coughlin, our town planner, at 508-839-5335, extension 1400, or you can email her at coughlinf@grafton-ma.gov. Silver Lake Beach opens Saturday, June 17th. Purchase your beach pass now at graftonrec.com or stop by the recreation office here at the municipal center. And that is the announcements. We have no public hearings tonight. Before we continue the meeting, I'd just like to make a note and ask that as we have our deliberations, that you guys ask to be recognized before we speak, so you can address me any way you want, but in order to have an orderly conversation.
Can we restrict that to Mr. Chairman?
You can?
Okay.
Yep.
Because any way we want could be...
I'm pretty comfortable with that. But that would be fine. Mr. Chair would be great. So let's proceed ahead with that. And also, if we have people in the audience that would like to speak, we had a little bit of up and down last time in the meeting. I would prefer to change that up so that if we have a topic that we're discussing and there's somebody in the audience that actually wants to speak on the topic, I'll just ask the board if you guys want to have some input from the public, and we'll have a short period where people who want to get up and speak can speak on the agenda item, and then we'll just continue our deliberation and discussion to just make it a little bit more organized.
As long as they go through the chair.
As long as they go through the chair. Yep, absolutely. And the last thing is, and I'll talk about this a little bit more. So I just attended an MMA seminar on public commentary. There was a lawsuit recently which involved Southborough, which has some implications on the way we need to run our public commentary, so I'll talk about that a little bit. But basically, the implications to that for us is we have a little bit of leeway to guide the timing of it, so when we have it on our agenda, we can ask that people keep their commentary to a certain length, so we can say, you know, keep it three to five minutes or whatever, and we have the ability to have an overall time for public commentary. It's all at the discretion of the chair, but beyond that, there isn't a lot of latitude for... You can request civil conduct, you can request polite conversation and all sorts of things, but they are requests, and so there's not a whole lot of topics that are out of bounds, I guess, if we choose to allow public commentary. So I'll talk about that a little bit more in the Select Board updates, but that'll be something that we'll implement tonight, which will be some time limits and some overall limits on just the overall time, so that somebody... Yeah, we don't have people filibustering necessarily or just going on and on with things. So having said that, we have no public hearings. Our next agenda item after that is appointments to the master plan working group.
Sorry.
Before we begin, there was some discussion about four people that had given their notice late. We clarified that with Fiona. There are four people that they haven't applied yet. They came and expressed interest late, so it'll be just the 14 that were originally included that would be appointed tonight.
Okay, makes sense.
So I'm sorry about that, Emery.
Yeah, no worries.
Mr. Chair?
Ms. Foley.
I move that the board vote to appoint Andrea Bresnahan, Julie Capuziello, Bob Carroll, Dorian DeFazio, Victoria Duckworth, Susan DeValle, Lindsay Fox, Deborah George, Julie Grace, Justin Hollander, Chantel Kimball, Jennifer Lewis, Essex Petrie, and Sue Robbins to the master plan working group.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Barring discussion, we'll have a roll call vote because we've got Mark on Zoom. Mead?
Mead, aye.
Jefferson, aye.
Afton, aye?
Fully, aye.
You have to unmute yourself, sir. I can't unmute you, but maybe Will can?
Uh, no, we think, Mark, we don't believe your microphone is connected. Your showing is not connected to audio. Now give it a whirl.
That's because I was on my phone.
Okay.
There you go.
Alamo, aye.
All right, the motion carries. Excellent. Moving on, we have no town administrator appointments. So yeah, we're good for... We have a proclamation for Captain Egan.
Hey, he's here tonight. How'd you hit him?
Good, actually. We won, we won. Surprisingly.
So what'd you like to read?
Maybe invite Captain Egan up to the...
Yeah, come on up.
Come on up, Captain.
If you would, please.
I get to sit down?
Yeah.
Absolutely.
We're not sure why.
I don't know. Getting old, you know?
So I'll read the...
Oh, Audrey, get the pictures from this side.
Yeah. You can come around if you want to. It's okay.
Don't encourage her.
Get Bob's good side.
That's from back there.
I was gonna say, we've already started back there.
I'll read the proclamation. Whereas on this date, June the 6th, 2023, the Grafton Select Board honors Captain Robert "Bob" Egan, who served the Grafton Fire Department for over 30 years. Whereas Bob was appointed November 11th, 1992, to the position of firefighter at Station Two. Advancing within the organization, he was promoted to captain on August 1st, 2013. Bob has shown strong dedication to his community as well as his department. His experience and knowledge will be truly missed with his well-earned retirement this year. Now therefore, we, the Select Board, do hereby proclaim our sincerest gratitude to Captain Egan for his years of service to Grafton and its residents. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, Bob? I could tell a few stories.
Don't.
But I'm not... But I'm not gonna.
I appreciate that.
It was a pleasure serving.
It was a pleasure serving with you and everybody else on the Grafton Fire Department. Bob, thank you so much for all of your years of service. It's an honor and it's a real privilege. Can you guys sign?
Sorry, just getting it to be signed.
We're getting this signed for you.
Oh, okay.
And we really do appreciate all of your years of dedication to the town. You know, it goes without saying that we're all extremely grateful for all the years that you've given us, so thank you so much. There you go. Thank you. Thanks. Thank you very much. Okay. Yeah, say a few words.
Yeah, no, say a few words. No, really, seriously. Just say a few words.
Well, I want to thank everyone for this, and I thoroughly enjoyed my years on the Fire Department, and that's all I got to say.
Thank you, Bob.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks so much, Bob. Okay, next up, we have a one-day beer and wine license. I think, Emery, you were gonna talk about that?
Yeah, if you don't mind, I'll speak to that, and then I can have someone else take the motion if that's appropriate, and then I can abstain. So the League of Women Voters tomorrow night will be hosting their annual meeting. It's held up at the Community Harvest Barn, and there will be wine. There'll be about 20 people up there, and the bartender is Tiff certified, and if you... We have this every year, so if anyone has any questions about it, feel free.
Sounds good.
And if not, maybe it's more appropriate for someone else to make the motion.
Well, Emery, you don't have to abstain.
Not at all. I don't think there's any conflict there.
Nope.
Okay. Then I move that the vote... Sorry, the board votes to approve the one-day beer and wine license for the League of Women Voters on Wednesday, June the 7th, 2023.
Second?
Second.
And a second. Any discussion or questions? Barring none, Mr. Alamo?
Alamo, aye.
Mead?
Mead, aye.
Jefferson, aye.
Afton, aye?
Fully, aye.
The motion carries. Okay, we are on to the Trails Committee charge, which I believe Emery's also gonna talk to.
Yeah, so as I mentioned last week, the Open Space and Rec Commission met the previous week, and we came up with a revised Trails Committee charge. I had brought this to the board maybe back in December for the first time, and so it took us a little time to revamp it, but it is in the packet, I believe, and I can kind of go through it in terms of the highlights if you'd like, read it out loud, or whatever you think, Mr. Chair.
So presumably, everybody's read it. So if you want to just go over kind of the highlights and maybe what's changed since the last version of the charge, I think that's probably good enough.
Okay, so what we determined, the mission of the Trails Committee would be to serve as a lead agency working in partnership with the Conservation Committee, Commission, the Land Trust, Planning Board, and Recreation. And then we highlighted action items that were specifically identified in the Open Space and Recreation Plan from 2020, and that those would be what we would target with this Trails Committee, and that was identified back then by that other committee. And then additionally, we'd be responsible for coordinating, so it was really more of a coordinating force in terms of this Trails Committee as opposed to out there doing any cutting of trails or even maybe, you know, there might be some identifying trails certainly, but it's coordinating with all the other factions that will be involved, and then, of course, encouraging the use. And then we would also look at exploring ideas for, you know, connecting trails, and that might be a space where the Trails Committee might be instrumental, whereas the Conservation Committee is looking at trails from their perspective, wetlands, conservation, et cetera. The Land Trust has some specific goals and objectives in terms of land that they're looking at, and Recreation as well. We think that this Trails Committee could be a nice kind of overseeing or oversight committee to that effect. So we envision it with five Grafton residents. We did not... We chose not to ask for specific, you know, someone from Conservation, someone from Select Board, et cetera, more because we thought that that commitment might be a little much for those committees. And that came... On the Open Space and Recreation Committee, we do have a representative from Conservation, a representative from Select Board, and Recreation. So this wasn't made in a vacuum, just us deciding, well, we don't want any of them at all. It was more what's realistic, right, for the commitment from those committees?
Okay. Any questions or discussions?
Mr. Chair, quick question?
Mr. Alamo?
Emery, is there any cost associated with this, or is this just identifying the trails and...
No, no cost. At some point, if the Trails Committee said, oh, look at, there's a quarter-mile link there that if we purchased that land or somehow we had that land, it would link this entire 10-mile route then potentially, but not in the short run, and that would obviously come with... Coming before this board, the town, et cetera.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or commentary? I like this. I'm really happy when we take the charge from a pre-existing plan, and I'm really happy that you just grabbed the language right from it, because the work's already been done to kind of prescribe what it is that's being envisioned in an inclusive and thoughtful way already, so, yeah, this is great. Did you have anything, Evan?
Yeah, I just... I think it's great. The inventory map, all open space trails, so we're doing that currently. We've been using GPS and doing all that, so I think that's just a coordination piece or just making sure we're not duplicating efforts that staff are already responsible for.
Yep.
But otherwise, I didn't have any other... Any other input.
And that's the intent. We did purposefully change some language in here and tried to highlight coordinating and overseeing, you know, as opposed to certainly not reinventing the wheel on anything that's being done.
Right. Yeah, I'm reading working in partnership and coordinating. And, yeah, assisting, that sort of stuff, so...
And again, I'm not trying to be obstructionist.
That's all right.
I just... My only concern is the coordinating the development, only because you have staff that already report in the hierarchy that do that work, and so is there a... I know that's not the intent, so I'm just...
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I'm not overly concerned, but maybe I'm just fixating on that, I just...
That was a line that we tapered down, so this was a longer charge when we met a couple of weeks ago.
Yep.
So we certainly could just stick to the above, you know, items, the specific items, right, from the plan?
Right.
And coordinate the development. Right. Maybe outside, maybe not coordinating?
Yeah, I just... And I know, so your intent isn't that, I'm just trying to think. All of the people on the Trails Committee now that know that, but then, you know, we have turnover in a couple of years, and now we've got a different understanding of what that means. That was... That's my only... My only...
Is it...
So just...
Sorry.
Go ahead.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Jefferson?
Could take me a minute to get used to that. Is it as simple as saying something like assist town departments in coordinating or, you know, amending it to something like that?
Yeah, or the committee shall work with the town departments on the development enhancement. That would be... That's a good suggestion, I think.
Okay.
Up above, we already have the working in partnership with all of those bodies, so I wonder if we just make this an additional thing under that umbrella?
Yeah. I wonder if I should... If we could just strike it, or if I should bring it back to the committee to do that? I'm thinking that the committee would be okay with me making the decision here.
So if you want to just strike it, I think that's perfectly amenable, and I think that language likely would be encapsulated in some of the stuff above already.
Yeah, I agree.
That would be a simple way to tackle that.
Yeah. I appreciate that.
Okay, so, Mr. Chair, are we ready for a motion?
I am ready for a motion.
Okay, so I move that the board vote to approve and sign the Trails Committee charge with the addition of striking the sentence in paragraph three. Is that sufficient?
Yep.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, Mr. Alamo?
Alamo, aye.
Mead?
Mead, aye.
Jefferson, aye.
Afton, aye?
Fully, aye.
The motion carries unanimously. Okay, moving on, we next have Discuss Proposition 2 and 1/2. So this was something that Ray brought. I'm gonna let you lead the discussion, Ray. Hopefully, everybody's read the article that you sent out as well, so I'll just hand it over to you.
Okay. So I brought this up originally in 2021, September of 2021, about, you know, should Proposition 2 and 1/2 get the ax, and that's actually in the Globe, in the Globe article. You know, we discussed it at that time, and Representative Meridian and Senator Moore, you know, suggested that we go through MMA to find out how many other cities and towns are interested in doing that. Since then, you know, two weeks or a week ago, the, you know, the article came out in the Globe, and then this morning, in today's telegram in Gannett, the town of Hope Dale just signed, just approved an override. And I was... Evan, did you happen to see that?
Hope Dale, I was not following.
Okay, so Evan, so Hope Dale is... They just approved an override for, I think, 1.3 million, and I could be wrong, whatever it is. But it also said, and I think this might have been a mistake, that their tax rate, their taxes for the average house, which was the average-priced house, was $450,000, it was gonna go up $562. So that's a $1.3 million override. Now, they needed that override to keep the library open, to not lose teachers, to not lose sports programs, to not lose a whole bunch of other stuff. This issue with Proposition 2 and 1/2 affects Grafton, but not dramatically to this point because we still have new growth, and we're still gonna have new growth for the next 10 years. 10 years from now, our new growth is gonna go down the toilet. We're not gonna... Really not gonna have any, because we're gonna be built out... The only new growth that we're gonna get is we're gonna get it out of houses, and I'm not sure where we can build more houses, because I really don't want to see more houses in town, but in Western Mass, this issue of Proposition 2 and 1/2 is an enormous problem because there are towns out there, and probably cities too, but there are towns out there that have zero new growth. Now, zero new growth means, as everybody knows, cutting your budget. It's not increasing your budget by 2 and 1/2% because you don't have the income of that 2 and 1/2%. What some of these towns are gonna do, I don't know, they have to approve overrides, and overrides are, although we've had, you know, a few of them, they're not popular items. And I really believe that Proposition 2 and 1/2 should be seriously looked at by the legislature, by the cities and towns, to come up with a solution that is not overrides, that if we go, and I'm gonna repeat myself because I said this before, if we go to 3 and 1/2, or 4, or 5, or whatever it is... Now, no one wants to raise taxes, but everybody still wants the services that we provide right now to the residents and to the, you know, businesses and everything that goes on in this town. And as I said, we're probably 10 years away from no more new growth. So we're gonna get hit with that in 10 years. But as everybody knows, how fast things go in Capital City, this discussion of Proposition 2 and 1/2 in this, you know, possible, you know, revamping and studying of Proposition 2 and 1/2 will take two to three years. In the meantime, cities and towns are gonna have to pass overrides. I mean, I personally would like to see, you know, the cities and towns be able to take more of a stand in what should happen. And what I'd like this board to do is to get involved in... With Evan and Will, with MMA, and let's do something. Let's find out what other cities and towns are thinking. Articles that come out in the paper, you know, they just don't make those up. I mean, well... Yeah, anyway, they don't make... You're not gonna make anything up about Proposition 2 and 1/2 because it's real. So in just taking Hope Dale, for example, $562 or $542 per tax bill going up because they don't have... Or they have limited new growth. It's gonna hit us all, and the legislature in Capital City needs to look at this and actually do something about it. So I want this board to take an aggressive step with MMA or whatever agency that we can do, because, like I said, everybody in Boston, they don't want to raise taxes. It gets to the point of survival, so, like I said, Hope Dale closing their library. They were closing their library. They were cutting out teachers, they were cutting out sports, they were cutting out all kinds of stuff. They got it approved. But that's a big nut to carry if your tax bill and your house is worth $450,000, which the average house in town is worth more than that in this town, and your bill's all of a sudden gonna go up 600 bucks because there's an override, and there was nothing to control that. There was nothing done about it, and there was no forward-thinking about this. So I would really like the board to take an aggressive step towards pushing this at the State House.
We've had two overrides, right?
Two.
Just not a few, yep.
Yep.
And we're two for two. A lot of towns have had a lot more than us, and they've had a lot of no's.
Yeah, yeah, they have. There's been a lot of no's, you know? I mean, when you go... We'll take George Hill, for example, you know, we were concerned about $96 on each tax bill, and we got that cut in half, and that was great. Imagine going to town meeting and sitting there and saying, by the way, your tax bill is gonna go up $650 after we pass this override. You know? The difference between our budget and our levy limit, in some towns, it's, you know, you go to Westboro and there, it's like this, you know? The difference between our budget and levy limit is not that much, and it would really be nice to have a cushion there to be able to do the things that we need to do and get them done, so...
Sir, any other commentary?
That's all right, I didn't say...
Sorry.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Alamo?
I'd like to follow your rules, Mr. Chair, which someone else didn't follow your rules.
Thank you. Thank you for being the good boy.
Mr. Chair, sir.
It was right there, though.
Sorry, I did it.
To Mr. Mead, is anything happening at the state level to address this? If I'm hearing you correctly, you want this to be sort of a grassroots effort from the ground up, from the Select Board level up, potentially across the state or as many cities or towns that you can find or that we could find, but is there any effort at the state level to consider this?
As far as I know, there's none. There's no effort at all at the state level to, again, raise taxes. So that's...
But to study this, yeah.
All I want to do is study it, you know, make a determination whether overrides are cheaper, which they're not, okay? But somebody's gotta do all of this stuff, and, you know, cities and towns are gonna be dying, you know, doing this and cutting things out, and I just don't want that to happen, so...
Mr. Chair? Mr. Jefferson?
So, Mr. Mead, what would you suggest our next steps be in this process? You know, reviewing the meeting minutes that were presented from that meeting with Senator Moore and Representative Meridian, it looked like they laid out a couple different directions forward. You know, we could try a ballot initiative. Would we recommend reaching out to our local MMA representative and trying to drum up interest there? Do we start discussing the local income tax option again? Is this something that Evan should weigh in on as to what he feels would be an effective path forward? I yield my time.
I have a comment, Mr. Chair, through you.
Ms. Foley?
Last thing. Just to be clear, though, any change or discussion relative to Proposition 2 and 1/2 would ultimately increase taxes, as does an override, in a different manner, so, as I understand it. So it's just something, you know, a needle to be threaded.
Well, you're absolutely correct. It will raise taxes.
I'm sorry, what's your name?
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair. And I'm... Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair. And I'm the one who, I'm the one who goes by the damn rules. Yes, it would, it would increase taxes, absolutely. But if you went to, and I'm just gonna throw this out there, if you said, okay, we're gonna change Proposition Two and a Half, we're gonna change it to Proposition Five, and this board and the town of Grafton decided that, you know what, we don't need Five, we'll take Three, okay? So, yeah, are you gonna raise taxes to, to pay your bills and, and to provide the, everything for your, for your residents? Yeah, you're gonna. And I have to say this, and I've said this before, taxes are not gonna go down, ever, because the school department budget goes up five point seven-five percent every year. We get two point five percent of that, or five, whatever it was, man, I don't shake.
I'm gonna stop you right there.
But, but what.
Check your numbers a little bit.
And, yeah, I know. But, but I'm just saying, you know, if, if you, if you work this bill or this change to the, say, Proposition Five, or whatever it is, but you don't have to go up to Five. You can go up to whatever you, whatever you want, but that limit is Five. Keep in mind, Two and a Half was, was adopted in nineteen eighty. Things were different back then, a lot different back then. And, and it's not only Grafton's, it's not only Grafton's issue. It's, and again, it's not an issue with Grafton right now, but the cities and towns that are, that are dying with no growth, no new growth is, you know, it's, it's really, it's really an issue, and, and I think that the legislature should work on this.
So, I'm gonna just say a couple of things. You know, I'm gonna keep going with the mantra of one town, one budget. You know, we don't, we don't look at departments. We look at what the town's budget is overall.
Yep.
Because that's how we determine the tax rate and, and all that. So, that's the way that I look at it, is that across the whole town, we have an increased budget year over year, which has been exceeding the allowable two and a half percent plus debt exclusions and other things, right, which is four and some change. That's the reality for Grafton. That's that structural deficit that we always talk about. It's in our, every time we have a, a bond rating, it gets mentioned by our, our auditors. So, that's what we're dealing with. I don't think that Prop Five solves the problem myself, because at, at the end of the day, well, I don't think we've clearly articulated what the problem is. So, you said taxes go up regardless, which I agree with. I think one of the problems is that Two and a Half is not tethered to any reality of what our cost drivers are, right? That's clearly a problem.
Yep.
So, when you have situations like inflationary environment, which is where we're at, I think there's gonna be a lot of towns struggling, because their costs have just gone up, and it's through no fault of their own, but their borrowing costs have gone up, their material costs for things like paving roads, constructing buildings, all of that has gone up in, in a fairly dramatic way. And yet, we've got this two and a half percent cap. So, there's clearly a real disconnect there, and I think that's a real identifiable problem. But just going to some other arbitrary number, like three, or four, or five, I don't think it actually fundamentally solves the issue. To, to your point, we need to thread this needle a little bit, right? So, the one thing that having the ability to go above that two and a half percent does is, my observation of the two and a half impact on Grafton has been that we have to squeeze, 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 squeeze over a number of years, and then we have to do an override, which represents a fairly significant one-time and then permanent tax increase, which isn't, it isn't good if you're that homeowner who has the extra five hundred dollars to pay next year. If you could spread that out in a more even way, and, and instead of in these steps, right, that's what we do now. We do, we do tamp it down, tamp it down, tamp it down, and then a big step. And then tamp it down, tamp it down, tamp it down, step. And those steps hurt people, especially people on fixed incomes. They just don't, the, the adjustment is, it's really abrupt. So, I, I think that that's a problem. But ultimately, the, I think that if we consider what the underlying causes are, it has to do with the cost drivers. And it's not about how much we can raise in taxes locally, although that's, that's become our problem. But I think a lot of people would say that that's a really healthy thing for us to have to ask the ta, the taxpayers to increase their taxes beyond a certain point. I don't know, I don't know what that is, but that that's a good check on government spending, to, to go and check with the voters and say, hey, do you wanna keep services as level service? And if you do, that's gonna mean an increase in your taxes of X, Y, and Z over the next five years, or whatever it is. There's, I think, a lot of constituents that would really resonate with the idea that that's a good thing, actually. The, the problem that I, that I have is where are our cost, significant cost drivers in the budget? And I think a lot of it comes from the state. We, we brought our state reps in here to talk about being better partners of ours, right? And I think that is, it was a little bit uncomfortable, but I think they needed to hear that. And, and I think there's, there's a lot of things to discuss. So, I, I guess, the point that I'm trying to get to is, I don't think it's just about two and a half. There, there are other things that need to be considered. And, but none of these things, it all feels to me like something similar to the foundation formula with the schools, where it took ten years for them to sort that out, do all the research, and in the end, it didn't benefit Grafton.
No.
So, I don't know, I'm a little bit skeptical, maybe. And, and I'm, I'm just trying to figure out what, what's the, what's the most effective, appropriate thing that we could do to position Grafton, to actually get some real help, because I, I could envision a lot of work and effort and whatnot, for not a lot of help to Grafton, because I don't know if other towns have the same exact problem that Grafton has. So, I don't know. That's me talking a lot, but I just, I don't, I'm not in favor of the, like, three and a half or five. I don't think that fundamentally solves our problem. I think it's more of a problem with our relationship with the state and, and our funding formulas for the various services. I, I think it's more to that than it is the tax cap. I don't like tax caps generally, but I don't think removing it or changing it is gonna necessarily help much.
Well, I don't, I think maybe, maybe I came across wrong in, in just throwing out, throwing out options there. But my goal is to either get to MMA or get with other cities and towns to get to the legislature to discuss what can be done. You know, if they spent two years or three years, and they said, we're gonna eliminate Proposition Two and a Half, you know, whatever, whatever they come up with is, is what, is what I'm talking about. The bottom line is, Proposition Two and a Half doesn't work anymore, and it needs to be revamped, however that is. However the, the study goes, the, you know, all the hearings and all of that stuff, it needs to be revamped. Nineteen eighty is a long time to have a law that is now restricting cities and towns in, in raising, you know, raising revenue or raising taxes, and something else needs to be done. That's, that's what I'm getting at, man.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Alamo.
It, it sounds like, and, and maybe I, the answer to Mr. Jefferson's question is, what Mr. Mead wants to do is to push the state to start looking more closely at this, and not just look at it, like, get something on the table and get some engagement on working towards solving this problem. I think that's what I'm hearing Mr. Mead say.
So, that makes sense to me. I haven't heard the problem clearly articulated yet, but I, I, I take your point. If I think about similar state initiatives, there would be a resolution passed by various select boards and towns, right? What is it that we're asking the MMA to do? Are we asking them to put together a working group, fund a study, you know? So, boots on the ground, what are we actually talking about here? I, that's what I'm trying to get to.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Jefferson.
Certainly a, a difficult discussion. When you mentioned, you know, or there has been mentioned, talking to our state reps and senators about this, I, I don't, I, I just, I, I'm not saying we shouldn't, but base, I have, I have hesitance based on our last interaction with, with both of them, where they came in pre-budgets to discuss our concerns, and, and I think the FinCom very well articulated what our concerns and needs are. And I think we were generally met with some I told you so's and, and not much offer of help. I just, I don't, I don't see them being terribly supportive of this issue. What, I shouldn't say being supportive of the issue, I, I see them pushing back on us as much as possible to do as much of the heavy lift for them as possible in order to keep this thing moving forward. I feel like they've already done that to a degree at the last meeting by stating that it need to be something that this board needed to get together with other local boards in order to move this forward, and, and, you know, the MMA and, and all the things that we could be doing. But I, I didn't hear, you know, much in terms of what they could be doing.
So, last words, Mr. Chair, for me.
They don't have to be your last words.
On this particular issue, the intent of this was that it's two and a half percent, right? So, it's a known, starting in nineteen eighty and going forward. And the towns have to argue their point, prove through finance committee, select board, Evan's office, et cetera, that we need more on a particular year. We've done that twice in the town of Grafton. And that involved a lot of work on a lot of committees' part, right, to prove that in fact, we need more money. And here's why. School committee was involved, no doubt in one of them, and whatever else was the other one, I think it was just an operating one. So, for me personally, that's not a bad way to work this as a taxpayer. And so, I guess I would be interested in how other people in the community feel, right? That I don't feel comfortable directing MMA one way or the other. But if that's, perhaps I'm completely off, and everyone feels that, no, I'd rather have five percent ongoing, and then I know what to expect, fair enough. But I guess it would be interesting to see the sense of the community somehow, how we do that, I have no idea. But to me, it's this, even though you're right, it's dated, it's from nineteen eighty, probably before I even lived in this, this country, but.
So, the year I was born, just.
Oh, dear.
Oh, boy.
Me and Andy.
Oh.
Okay.
You were negative sixteen million.
So, I, I don't dispute, Ray, that it's clearly dated, but I under, the intent of it still makes sense to me. But that's, again, my personal opinion.
Okay. Evan, can I ask if you have any, any thoughts on this matter?
I would love that.
I, I'm just thinking, especially with regards to the MMA, I, I'm hearing that they might be of some assistance to help either give us some advice on pathways to having this Two and a Half reconsidered, or potentially connecting us with other select boards or, or other, you know, town entities.
Yeah, we could certainly reach out to MMA and see what they're hearing from other select boards and what, what's going on. They don't have any active platform that I've seen, where they're arguing against that. I sit on their environmental and energy committee, and we talk about budget constraints, just in general, because of energy prices. And it seems like a lot of towns are in the same boat, you know? We're seeing double-digit increases in, in all of our envi, our fuel costs. So, I'd be happy to reach out to MMA and pick their brain and see where, what they're hearing other towns discussing, and see if they think that there's any, any traction to be had there, or something that MMA wanted to look into. And then I can bring that back to all of you if you think that that's appropriate.
That's an option.
Yeah, no, that's fine. That's, that's actually all I'm asking.
Was the board happy with that?
Yeah, I think we go from there. Okay.
Make it happen.
I'm on it. Dear MMA, how do we raise taxes?
All right.
All right. Any other commentary on Proposition Two and a Half? All right. Next item we have is the right of first refusal for fifteen Luka Drive, Unit Eight.
Do I go ahead and make the motion?
Yep.
Okay. So, the motion for consideration, I move that the board vote to exercise the first refusal option to purchase Unit Eight at fifteen Luka Drive, Grafton, Massachusetts?
Can you read that again?
Well, am I, so, we'll just, I'll say I moved the vote to exercise or not, and then we discuss, and I'll.
No, 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 we don't want to exercise.
We definitely don't want to exercise.
No, you wanna, the, the, so this is a, a standard thing, this is a selling of a forty-peat property, it has to come back to the boards, you want, you want to.
Not exercise.
Not exercise your right of first refusal.
Okay. I move that the board vote to not exercise the first refusal option to purchase Unit Eight at fifteen Luka Drive, Grafton, Massachusetts.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Okay. All those in favor, Mr. Alamo.
Alamo, aye.
Mead.
Mead, aye.
Jefferson, aye.
Off, then aye.
Foley, aye.
Motion carries. All right.
Almost just bought a house right there.
I know.
Well, I wasn't sure if we discussed, and then, I'll just go with not exercise.
All good.
I'll make the decision.
All right. So, I put the next one on, which is select board representation on boards and committees. I am interested in, without having to resign, removing myself for consideration based on last, the last meeting from the Affordable Housing Trust. And Mr. Jefferson has expressed interest in doing that instead. So, I wanted to check in with the board on that.
Aye.
And if everybody's happy with that, then I can take a motion for that appointment.
Okay, so I move that Andy Jefferson is moved to the afford, the current representative, select board representative on the Affordable Housing Trust.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, Mr. Alamo.
Alamo, aye.
Mead.
Mead, aye.
Jefferson, aye.
Off, then aye.
Foley, aye.
Motion carries. Okay. In discussions with Mr. Jefferson, he also indicated that he would be interested based on that appointment and getting off of CIPC, which is the Capital Improvement Planning Committee. And I had some, a couple of discussions. So, is anybody else on the board interested in that?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Alamo.
I'd be interested, I'd be interested in CIPC.
Okay.
So, Mr. Chair.
If no one else is, and I wouldn't wanna step on any toes.
Sure.
But that'd be interesting to me.
Yeah, okay.
Mr. Chair, I vote to appoint Mark Alamo to the Capital Improvement Planning Committee as the current select board representative.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, Mr. Alamo.
Alamo, aye.
Mead, aye.
Jefferson, aye.
Off, then aye.
Foley, aye.
Okay, the motion carries. Great. Next, we are on to the TA report, actually, select board reports. Do I have any of those?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Jefferson.
I just want to thank the American Legion Post Ninety-two, the Veterans Advisory Committee for organizing, and also Representative Meridian, Chief Crepo, the Grafton PD, the Grafton High School Band, and all the Girl and Boy Scout troops in town for their help and participation in this year's Memorial Day Parade. Grafton PD, the Grafton High School Band, and all the Girl and Boy Scout troops in town for their help and participation in this year's Memorial Day Parade.
Yeah, it was fun. Nice walking with all you guys. Anything else? Um, then I'll just mention, so I went to an MMA uh, discussion on um, a recent court case uh, that happened in uh, regards to some public commentary that happened in a public meeting in Southborough. And I uh, am happy to forward the video to all you guys, if you guys, I would encourage you to look at it. And I'll just briefly um, cover the highlights. Essentially, the um, uh, this was a First Amendment issue uh, that got brought up in the um, Massachusetts Supreme Court. So um, there was a resident at a public meeting that was um, exercising their right at the chair's discretion to um, engage in public commentary. The chair had certain um, guidelines that they were asking uh, for the, everybody to adhere to, which included things like being civil and uh, polite and, and collegial and those sorts of things. And uh, the resident uh, basically um, got a little bit agitated and uh, had some uh, interest in commentary, at which time that the chair um, discontinued uh, public commentary, uh, based on that, they went on a um, uh, essentially on a, they took a recess. So um, there was, uh, that went to the uh, Supreme Court, there was some discussion about it, and they clarified some points which I think are relevant to us, so I just wanted to kind of talk through those. There is no legal requirement for this board to have um, public comment periods during our meeting. That's 100% our um, you know, our purview to decide on. We can decide when public commentary gets put on our agenda. We can also decide uh, how long we would like people to speak for individually and then as a, um, as a block of time. So we can say, we want public commentary to last for 30 minutes. That's gonna be the, the amount of the block of time that we're gonna allow for that on our agenda. Beyond that, though, um, we uh, residents who avail themselves of that public commentary, there's very few things that they um, need to stay away from, uh, things like public incitement, threats of violence, uh, things like that, fighting language, um, fairly egregious uh, things, um, but, but there's very few of those things, so um, that has a bearing, I think, and the uh, the MMA has um, put that sem, seminar together, and they're gonna start an educational program out to the various select boards. But I just wanted to um, mention that in our meeting, um, in our commentary period, I'd like to keep the comments individually to five minutes, um, and the, the whole period to 20 minutes, and we'll start with that, see how that goes. And, and we'll have that just be our standing uh, guidelines for public commentary.
Sounds good.
So I will forward that, um, I do encourage everybody to watch it, um, and uh, I guess that's all I have to say on it, so.
Thank you.
The TA report.
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Over to you.
Okay.
Mr. Brass.
Okay, um, so we are deeply entrenched in our year-end process. We are currently in the midst of closing our books as we approach July 1. So we have all of our end-of-year reporting underway, um, and so what I mean by closing the books is we have to balance all of our income and expenses, close out any purchasing that we have in the works. Um, we also need to make sure that we do all of our DOR reporting, and that's a very exhaustive process to do. Um, so that started uh, really probably in March, and will go until the end of July.
Started in March?
Yeah, the stuff that you can safely close out, we try to tick off, because otherwise you're scrambling in June and July.
Sure.
To try to get that done. Uh, it is a very exhaustive process. We also, at this time, encumber any funds that weren't able to be spent, um, that had a direct intended purpose. And so we're working through all of that and working with department heads to make sure that their end-of-year spending is uh, congruent with the level that we need to, to be at. Um, so you will see in uh, one of the upcoming meetings, we'll have FinCom here, and for the new members, this is how this works. FinCom will come in and you will vote on our end-of-year transfers, that's us moving money from one pot to the other pot. Um, and we do that a, as this end-of-year process as opposed to the town meeting process, and that's allowable now under um, the Municipal Modernization Act of 2016. Um, and that's what it says right there. Forgot I wrote that already. All right, uh, otherwise, I attended and presented at the Chamber of Commerce meeting for um, the 495 Chamber. They meet in Westboro, so they asked me to come in and give a status of Grafton update, so I went in and talked about all the development that we have going on here, and um, I started with a municipal budget review, which I think glazed them over significantly in the first five slides, so next time I'm, I'm invited back, I'll skip that part, and we'll go right to the development stuff. Um, I met with the Chair of the Bylaw Review Committee, so as they work through their process, um, questions have been coming up. Uh, and we're working pretty extensively to update the personnel policy, um, bylaw. We also, I met with um, Rec Director a number of times. Um, her resignation is coming up in your agenda. Um, so we've been reviewing ongoing projects and transition, uh, creating documents to help support that transition, as well as the uh, completion of these projects that are already in the works. So tomorrow, uh, we're having a capital project meeting uh, with all the different affected departments, and we're gonna um, carve up some of that work, so that it can be delegated out to the other department head, so that we don't lose any time on the things that we've, we've already put in motion. And then the DE and I audit is still in, we haven't talked about it in a while, it's still in, in process, so we've done the original surveys and gotten all of that data back, and then they've taken that data and created a staff interview process to now interview staff and talk through the findings and, and what people's actual experiences are. So that continues to, to move forward.
Great.
All right.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Anything else?
I think that was it.
Great. Uh, okay, we have uh, correspondence next, uh, does anybody wanna bring anything up?
Uh, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Jefferson.
Just quickly, um, it was nice to see some uh, positive feedback come through for uh, some of our parks work that uh, Ms. Anderson forwarded along to us, so that was, uh, it was nice.
Absolutely. All right, next we have resignations.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Foley.
I move the board vote to acknowledge and accept the resignation of Marilyn Wilcox from her position as Senior Library Associate at the Grafton Public Library, effective June the 30th, 2023.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor, Mr. Alamo.
Alamo, aye.
Me.
Me, aye.
Jefferson, aye.
Off, aye.
Foley, aye.
The motion carries.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Foley.
I move the board vote to acknowledge and accept the resignation of Jen Anderson from her position as Recreation Director, effective June the 9th, 2023.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor, Mr. Alamo.
Alamo, aye.
Me.
Me, aye.
Jefferson, aye.
Off, aye.
Foley, aye.
The motion carries, okay. Is there any public commentary, anybody on Zoom?
No hands on Zoom.
Okay, there is nobody here in person, uh, we have meeting minutes next.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Foley.
I move the board, board vote to approve the meeting minutes for May the 23rd, 2023, as written.
Second.
I have a motion and a, delayed second.
Sorry.
Any discussion on the motion? Uh, hearing none, all those in favor, Mr. Alamo.
Alamo, aye.
Me.
Me, aye.
Jefferson, aye.
Off, aye.
Foley, aye.
Motion carries, uh, we have no need for executive session tonight, I will take a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chair, motion to adjourn, sorry.
It's okay, I'm sorry.
Motion made and seconded, all those in favor, Mr. Alamo.
Alamo, aye.
Me.
Me, aye.
Jefferson, aye.
Off, aye.
Foley, aye.
And we are adjourned, thank you very much.